Raise your right hand. Do you, Scott Barquet, having been elected to the office of Chief of Police for the City of Milton, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your abilities so help you out?
I do.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to Milton.
Okay. All right. Agenda item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. If you have something that you would like to speak on at the beginning of our meeting, please do so now and come up to the podium and say your first and last name and your address. If there is something that you want to speak on later in the agenda, you have the opportunity to do so. So if there's anybody that would like to speak right now, come on up. You can speak now or you can speak later, whatever your preference.
We want one last opportunity to address the comments regarding liquor license.
Sure.
I'm not sure whether we should do that and how or if you want us to do that later.
It's really your preference.
Okay.
It's not going to be long before it comes up. It'll probably be like, what?
Whatever the council wants. I'm only going to do it once.
Okay. So what we'll do right now is we'll have you wait because on item number four, it's approval of our consent agenda, we'll pull those items down.
It's not on the consent.
It's not.
It's not.
Linda, okay.
Yes.
Linda, it's not on the consent.
Five and six.
Okay.
Oh, you're right.
Okay. All right. Okay, so item number four, approval of the consent agenda, is there anything that needs to be pulled down? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number five, discussion and possible action on the Class B beer and Class B liquor license application from Dickens Partners doing business as Dickens Partners located at 450 South John Paul Road.
And I'll just make a general comment. I know, I think everybody was in the room when I made these comments, but before we kind of go into these items, as everybody's aware, there's four items on the agenda this evening that are in reference to Class B liquor licenses. The council has a number of options available to them. They can issue up to two licenses this evening. We have two available licenses. The council can choose to issue two licenses to two of the applicants that they feel are most deserving, or they can issue none. There is a provision within our local ordinances that allow a license that is not in use for 90 days to be revoked by the council. That's a discretion that the council has afforded. So even if you issued a license this evening to one of those operators, they didn't have a business in operation today and didn't open one within 90 days, you could revoke that license. So you could issue it and let it be. You could issue it and revoke it 90 days if they don't have a license, or you could not issue a license, and that goes for all four of the applicants. So I just wanted to kind of set the stage for everybody. I think everybody was in the room when I said that at PNF, but it probably bears repeating now since we're being recorded and all that good stuff, too. And again, I would encourage folks to work with the attorney if you have questions that Lenna and I can't answer. So, sorry.
I have a general item as well before we get started on listening. And I talked to Mark, so I'll make sure that this is the proper form at this point. I received a message just in regards to Jason Colley of Piggly Wiggly over here. He wanted to send an email out to the council and with recommendations on these specific matters, and so is that something I can read then to you? He's forwarded to me. Does anybody?
Yes, I'd spoken with all the persons that he had about that, and I said that if he had received, as if any of you did, receive an email or text, you can print it off if you don't have that capability. You can read it just as you would a letter. It really is no different as long as it's made a part of the record and then Lenna can make it.
Is he in here? Anything?
It's on, I don't know. Made it a part, it just needs to be made a part of the record, and so whether it's read or put in in writing, it can be done. So as long as it's identified who it's from and the subject and read it, then it's fine.
Well, then I'll continue, then word for word. Jeremy, I forgot to send an email to the council, but if you could let the council know that I would personally recommend that Doug Kraus for the Caddyshack and Chris Roach and Dave Johnson for the building that Varsity Lanes is in to get the two open liquor licenses available. All three are longtime residents of Milton. Both groups are good citizens that have shown through the years that they actively support the city. Mr. Roach and Mr. Cross both have owned successful businesses in Milton. In my professional and personal opinion, it would make sense to give the licenses to people that have credentials like these three. Sincerely, Jason Colley, Colley's Piggly Wiggly. That's all.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We, I just wanted one last opportunity to address the council. I didn't realize there was going to be open comments. I am David Johnson, I'm one of the managing partners of Dickens. You know, we, unfortunately, Tony decided to close the business. We didn't want to see Tony leave. Tony was a decent tenant, there were some issues, you know, with her tenants' seat, but unfortunately she closed the business. We really love to see bowling continue here in Milton. We're both community guys. Our intention is to lease it back out as another bowling alley. You know, I was, it was my understanding that the 90-day option was out there, and that would be a good option for us. It'll hopefully allow us to market the facility as a bowling alley, you know, with the liquor license. Without that, it's going to be difficult for us to really put any plan together for any long-term tenant. We are more than comfortable with, you know, reviewing it, accepting this liquor license with, you know, with the understanding that we would review it again in 90 days.
Thank you. I guess I would like to hear all of the council's thoughts and comments on this before you all make a decision. I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Mayor, we, personally in finance, voted to deny this on the basis that there is no defined plan, no starting plan for this business, there's nothing there. I mean, we would be giving a license to somebody who right now doesn't have a business. It would have to try and sell this thing as a package, and we didn't think that based on past practices, that was inappropriate. We have always looked at a business about to start or one that was already operating that wanted to expand their business.
If I could add my concerns, without knowing who is the incoming party, I find it hard to form an opinion. And in that case, I would like to, I can't vote for something I have no identity on.
That brings up an interesting question then, I guess. Say we granted the license, but we didn't get the background check on the person who is going to be operating the facility, would there be something in that regards at that point? Do we automatically hand over the business license to whoever he chooses?
No. So what would happen is, is they're planning on holding it until they can find a tenant, from what I understand.
Correct.
So then that new person would have to come here with their own alcohol application, so you would be able to review their business plan, there would be a background check done, and it's completely up to you whether you would give it to them or not. They probably would be purchasing the business on, with the contingency that they have to get the license. It's all kind of mingled together.
Well, I guess under that assumption, if it's the only license that we give away today and there was still one to entice new business to come in, I would give them this 90 days. If a business can produce a tenant that can bring a community event such as bowling in that facility to that side of town, I'm all for that.
I am actually of the opinion that in order for this property to sell as it is, they're going to have to have a liquor license. And having the 90 days to do that, I think is, it makes it an excellent opportunity for them to be able to fill that space, and I have complete confidence based on how well I know the owners and the companies that they work with. I'm, I have complete confidence that they're not just going to have anybody come in that is not reputable. And we will have the opportunity to review the license, and so I just, I feel like this is something that we need to do in order to keep a business in the city, a business that is family-oriented, been in the city for, I don't know, I've been here for 14, 15 years, and it was here before I was. It's also a school activity for the gym classes. I don't know if everybody in this room is aware of that, but they do go over to the bowling alley. So, you know, and 90 days, I think is a good fair chance, and if it doesn't work, then, you know, by that time, somebody else might be ready to have that license. So I would, I am totally for the license for the Dickens Partners.
I don't disagree that we need a liquor license to maintain businesses. We also need it to attract new businesses, and unfortunately, we are headed as a patron of the dean as to the number of liquor licenses that we have. And as I suggested, assign them without a strong business plan there. Just part of that assignment, to just say, well, we hope it's there when you're completed and recognize that it may or may not be there is good enough at this point, even though there are already four or two businesses is just not enough right now. And as such, I imagine that there will be more upfront before those licenses are assigned.
I guess I have to agree with David, and I can't see allowing the license to be held just so that they might get somebody in there, and if they, nothing's guaranteeing us that they would get a good background check and everything else. Even though I hate to see the business not be there, I would have to say that I don't think that it's right to let them hold the license just in case.
We're only asking for 90 days.
I know, I know.
If there was someone else here that, you know, had a, that had a property that was ready to reopen, I could certainly understand, you know, why you would hesitate with Dickens. But, you know, we're one of the few properties in Milton community that is set up for this exact purpose. You know, we're hoping to be able to make this as fast a turn as possible, but without that liquor license, we're not going to be able to market it in the way we want to market it, which is our business plan. Our business plan isn't to open a bar. Our business plan is to market a building. Without that liquor license, I just don't see us being able to market it as a bowling alley anymore. And that's ideally what we'd like to do as a partnership. I mean, the best investment for us is to turn it over as a bowling alley.
And then on the other hand, if they don't turn it into a bowling alley because they don't have the liquor license when the building is up for sale, whoever purchases that building, if it's not going to be a bowling alley, it's going to cost a lot of money to renovate that building.
Correct.
But right at this point, we don't have anyone else. There's two liquor licenses, and we've got them, and they'll be here until another business would come, so that their 90 days are not, it still would be available.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions. So is the property in the building up for sale? Or are, and maybe you're doing both, or are you marketing it to, so you hold the property and then somebody opens a business and you lease the building?
It is for sale or lease.
Okay.
And if somebody wants to come along and purchase the building, fantastic. We lost our tenant, so now we're trying to find a new tenant or a new owner to the property.
Okay. So I just want to summarize, if I understand what the council is saying, just for my own understanding, we, or some of the council, is preferring not to allow, allow them to hold the liquor license in the hopes that they're going to, to find somebody to open a business. But then us as the government are saying, we're hoping to hold the liquor license in the hopes that somebody else is going to come along and, and open a business within 90 days and have it ready to go? Is that?
Unless there's someone else that will see people already veteran, because they can't be guaranteed the ones who never have their business plan and everything ready to go whenever, so that these liquor licenses aren't just held hostage.
Except for we're, we're kind of holding it hostage.
Before, and we're not just going to hold on to those licenses indefinitely.
Is it clear to the council that they do have the final say if somebody does come in and wants to run a business there?
It's clear.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that you understand that even if they, they have it for 90 days and somebody comes in, you still could say, we don't like this tenant, whatever, we're going to deny it with a rational reason. I just want to make sure everybody is clear on that.
I'm clear on it, and I just, I guess reaffirm my backing the bowling alley in this matter. If it's the only license we give away today, we're giving them the opportunity to be the closest to starting a new business, something that can happen within 90 days. And I'm not sure what kind of business plan we'd be looking for. It's a bowling alley. It's already operated and functional as one. The business plan would probably be nearly identical. But to generate that revenue then for the city, this is the closest thing that we have in front of us, and with two licenses being available, I don't see nothing wrong with giving them 90 days. And we can relook at this in 60 days, as you suggested.
Mark, I have a quick question. So if we did issue them and in 90 days, nothing happened, then what would the process be after 90 days?
You need to follow statutory license revocation procedure.
And how long does that take? Is there so many days notice? And then is there another public hearing? Is there an appeal?
There's a complaint that's filed by a citizen of the city that, in which case it may well be, in this case, as an example administrator, because the administrator would be keeping track of the fact that there's been no operating business there for 90 days, and the complaint would be filed, and then the council would have a hearing scheduled, and then the license holder would have the opportunity to present their own, have a hearing, present their own witnesses, cross-examine the city witnesses, the city would present witnesses. It'd be, you'd be conducting basically a administrative hearing or trial and making a decision based on the evidence before you as to whether or not there's sufficient grounds for revocation of the license. So it isn't an automatic thing, just, you know, I mean, you can do either way, or you can wait beyond 90 days, that's really up to you, but that's the process.
And then if the council were to deny the liquor license today, is there an appeal process for, in this instance?
If, if the council were to vote to deny, yes, they could appeal to the circuit court. And, but they have a, they have a high burden in that regard, and that they need to show there's no rational basis for the decision of the city council in denying, and normally that, what trips up municipalities there is they just fail to state what their basis was in denial. And so in the past, the council's been good about if they deny a license, they state why, so that the clerk can put that in their notice.
One more question. When does the 90 days start?
I haven't really looked at the ordinance, but presumably it starts upon the issuance of the license.
Okay. Oh, no, because when the last business closed, so it was July 1st when it was no longer operating. So is that the date? What is the date?
It'd be, well, it would be the, the date from that it's, the license is issued. I guess if you issue it, well, it'd be the date the license is issued, would now pass July 1st. So whatever the date is the license issued, you go 90 days from then.
So like, starting tonight, should that vote pass? Okay, thank you.
If, yeah, if it's issued, I don't, it might be actually issued tomorrow, I'm not sure, but assuming it's tomorrow, we'd go 90 days from that date, yes.
Thank you.
Dave, maybe you, you would recall, or somebody else that has been on the council for a long time, have we ever had special meetings to listen to an application for a liquor license if something came up really quick and they needed to, to close on a deal quick?
No.
We did for the quick trip.
Okay.
We had special meetings.
That was a package.
It was a liquor license.
Okay. So it's not that we haven't had a special meeting or we couldn't gather?
That's my only concern, is it's my understanding, this is the one time a year that you guys are going to issue a liquor license.
So, okay.
No?
No, that's not true.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood it.
If there's license available, you can apply.
You can apply at any time. Okay.
Maxine.
If we issued this license and for 90 days, and he didn't have a business in 90 days, how much financial will we be involved in? What is it going to cost us to revoke those licenses?
I guess it depends, depends how you proceed. You probably have a court reporter to take down whatever the testimony is, you have a record of what was done, and it depends on whether or not you wish to hire a counsel to assist in the prosecution of the revocation. That's often done, because as city attorney, I wouldn't be able to both assist in the prosecution and advise the council in terms of procedurally how it's to handle the trial. You either have to have two attorneys or just rely upon whoever's presenting the complaint to handle it themselves.
So it'd be a financial burden to the city.
Maxine, we would be willing to agree to surrender it in 90 days. I mean, we're just using it as a marketing tool. We don't want to see the city incur any costs. We're not looking for, you know, to create that sort of issue. It's, if, we're more than willing to agree to say, hey, 90 days from today, if we don't have somebody that's interested in taking it over as a bowling alley, or at least a business plan that says, hey, I need 30 more days or 45 more days to get this done, we'll surrender the liquor license back to the city, but it's just going to make the property a lot more marketable for us if we have that. If someone coming in says, I know I have the liquor license, because nobody's going to consider opening up a bar unless they know a liquor license is out there.
And empty buildings in the City of Milton are a detriment to all of us. We have to keep that in mind. This is a very big piece of property here.
So, Mark, if they're agreeing to surrender the license, would we have, in 90 days, would we have to have something in writing? Is that even something that we could do, or?
I would be cautious about that because that's not called for in the statute. And Chapter 125 controls not the village ordinance, the city ordinances in that regard. The city ordinance can control in terms of whether or not there's a time period during which license needs to be used or is considered abandoned, that's fine, but then the statute calls for a process. Now, I don't doubt that Mr. Johnson's group will voluntarily surrender it if called upon to do that, that's what he's indicating, but, but all I'm telling you from a legal standpoint, I can't tell you that, that it wouldn't be necessarily enforceable if he changed his mind.
Is there any further comments by the council, or does somebody want to make a motion regarding agenda item number five? Do you have anything further?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Class B beer and Class B liquor license for Dickens Partners.
I'll second it.
For 90 days or forever?
The attorney just suggested not to do the 90 days.
Correct.
Right.
Correct, because you're just granted for a year, and a basis for finding abandonment is if they don't use it within 90 days. Then you go through your process of revoking, which may end up with them surrendering it, but you still, so that's why if the license is granted, it's granted for the year unless it's revoked.
So this motion is with the understanding that in 90 days, it will come back to us?
Not just, no.
Well, could we put it, I mean, they're saying that they would surrender it, but we could put it, could we put it for review in 90 days or ask them to come back in 90 days and give us an update, or?
You can certainly calendar it for 90-day review, certainly.
I'll add that to my motion.
So a condition for a 90-day review?
Yes.
Okay, is everybody clear what the motion is? Alenna, do you, could you please read it back to us?
So the motion is to grant the license on the condition that there will be a 90-day review.
And Jeremy, you've seconded that motion?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
Is it a 3-3?
Excuse me.
Welcome back, Mayor. So it's up to me. I vote that we grant it with a 90-day review. So, and then the motion would carry, is that the correct terminology?
Yes.
Okay. There you go. Item number six, discussion and possible action on the Class B beer and Class B liquor license application from the Gathering Place doing business as the Gathering Place located at 715 Campus Street. And we have a speaker.
Yes, Dave Fisher, Executive Director. Okay, now let's give a little history of the Gathering Place. Gathering Place has been in Milton for 23 years. Mary and Alan donated this beautiful facility, this, to our community, and it's our job to keep it going, maintain it in whatever way we have to, to make it work. We strongly feel that the Gathering Place is a pillar in this community, and we have been and we will continue to be that way. We are very interested in this liquor license to enhance our program. You know, it's not a business business, it's a, it's a program that has been here and will be here for a long time. We're asking, as Alan talked earlier, you know, we've explored every possible way to increase our liquor license to, so that we could sell liquor at events for rentals, anniversary parties, et cetera, et cetera. It's not going to be a burden to this community to do that. You know, the sale of liquor in our, in our arena was very controlled, there'd be very, there'll hardly ever, if ever, be any community support from, from law enforcement with regards to what we're doing. It's the only way that we're going to increase what we do in our current facility, is in generating revenue. We've exhausted everything else possible with the possible expansion of what we're going to do in the future, which we do not know, but it could also, this could also enhance what we're, what we're able to market when we do this. The Gathering Place, you've all been there, you all know what it's like. I know you've all been to venues in our, in our facility. It's just, our appeal is that this is our only chance to increase revenues, and we really would benefit from, from this liquor license. When I, when we have a class reunion, we had a class reunion in 1960, Class Reunion came to the Gathering Place. They wanted to rent the place. Okay, well, the committee that's on the class reunion says, hey, we'd like to have Bloody Marys. Well, guess what, we can't do that. Well, okay, they're taking their money, and they're taking their families and so on to other communities, because we can't serve Bloody Marys. And it's, it's, it's a darn shame. It, it's, it's not that we're gonna abuse the license, we certainly wouldn't, but it would certainly enhance what we're doing programmatically, and, and it certainly would affect our bottom line, and we would appreciate the consideration.
Besides the, the additional weddings, the parties, is there a, a business plan, so to speak, in, to, of how you're going to generate, maybe beyond that? Something that would, it, it's, we're limited in the amount of licenses that can be handed out, and we're virtually at the end. So to have one available to a business that could generate more money to Milton seems like more feasible. Do you have something besides, you know?
You know, all I can tell you is, you, if you build it, they will come. We're, we're losing, we're losing, as I spoke earlier, we're losing revenue because we don't have the license. People are taking their business to Janesville, Fort Atkinson, as a result of, of not having a facility that can do what we can do. You know, it, it's very frustrating for us when, when we're, when we have the most beautiful place within miles. You all know that, you've all been in our place. It sells itself. But when a young bride wants to come in and wants to have a, have, have drinks at a wedding reception, you know, a ninetieth and birthday that we might have, and somebody might wanna have a hot toddy, you know, and we're not able to do that, and, and they take their business elsewhere, it's very frustrating for us. And, and believe you me, we see it, you know, like I said, we've lost several opportunities this year. God knows how many opportunities we've lost, because they never got to that point because of what we're, what we're able to offer. And it's just, it's just an enhancement to the program, to a wonderful program, and only makes it better.
I just have one question for Mark. Is there any other options avail, I mean, I think you guys already talked about this when I was here in Personnel and Finance, but is there anything that you could think of?
Well, I wasn't here for Personnel and Finance, so I don't know what they discussed, but I know that there's been various options that have been researched by our office to, to see what there might be. I'm not aware of any.
Mayor, we, uh...
And I was, I was here for Personnel and Finance.
Yeah, we, we talked a little bit about that, you know, finding a, a way to, a temporary special occasion permit, can't do that with a liquor license, so. If there's anybody else up here that wasn't here during the discussions, we turned it down based on the fact that this is not a full-time, everyday serving business, and that it could be put to better use elsewhere.
So would it be different if they were serving every day? I, I mean, it's just a question, I, I, you know?
In a way, I would say, yeah.
Yeah.
But then, on the other hand, how is it good for us as a city to keep an entity like the Gathering Place from having this type of a license, in order to have another bar-type place have one? I mean, if you think about, if you look at the numbers that we're talking about, we are allowed to have ten, right? Ten licenses in the city? Okay, so we have nine of them that are going out to Bar and Grill, and those types of places. Is it not important for us to have that opportunity for a destination place that we have in Milton? I really was taken when I found out that one of those class reunions happened to be from Milton High School. Because when I go to my class reunions, I like to go in the city where I graduated from. And I like Bloody Marys occasionally. I'm not a big drinker, but, you know, like, I, when my family comes to town, they like to have mixed drinks. We need to have that, the Gathering Place, we need to give them the opportunity to grow into a place like, like, I was just recently at a wedding over at the Moose Club. And granted, they have a bar there that they have set up. I don't know if they're open every night of the week, but I can tell you that that was a pretty big wedding reception. And I know that there were people that, that stayed right there and put their money into the city of Janesville because it was there. And, you know, earlier this year, I spoke to the fact that one of the biggest things that we talked about at the municipal conference was keeping people in the city that you are representing, and bringing people to that city. And if we can have a venue that will do the weddings, and the graduation parties, and so on, so forth, we need to embrace that. And this is the opportunity for us to be able to do that. And yeah, it's gonna be, it is kind of risky, because it's one of those ten licenses. But think about that one real closely, it's one of ten. The Gathering Place is plan, is planning an expansion, and we need to support them. That's all I have to say.
In following on Linda's speech, the Gathering Place is a unique asset in the city of Milton. It provides something that other cities are mildly envious. We have a wonderful senior center. It is, it crosses over the age brackets and has the concerts in the park. It does more than just localize in one building. I truly do believe that if it's going to expand, it's bought land to consider expansion.
Yes.
The business plan is, I, I gather, not in ink yet. But your plan is to use and expand on a venue for entertainment? I, I would like to...
If you'd like me to speak about that, I can do that, but yes, we've, you know, I know you all folks, you folks know that we've, we've purchased the two acres west of our facility. We're in the planning process with Van de Wall Associates and putting together a design, a vision for that property, which includes a venue that will increase the number that we could accommodate at receptions, and, and parties, and anniversaries, and, and concerts on our lawn, and starlight theaters, and so on. We're gonna build a structure that can hold two-hundred-and-fifty people. If we, if we do that, the, the, the opportunities for, I'm just gonna say, for, for graduation parties, anniversary parties, class reunions, weddings will be increased, okay? Right now, right now, if, if you're a, if you're a, if you're a young bride in Milton, okay, and you wanna have a wedding where you have more than a hundred-and-fifty people, guess where you're gonna take it? You're gonna take that money out of town and go to Janesville, or somewhere else that can accommodate that. Our goal is to build the structure to accommodate our folks here in Milton, so they don't take that money, and they don't take their families, and they'll take all that income that's coming in when you have a weekend wedding, and go someplace else. And in doing so, we would love to have a liquor license that goes along with that, so that we can be a full-service venue for, for rentals. It's, you know, it's not gonna happen today or tomorrow, but I'm telling you right now, if you look at what we've done to improve that neighborhood in less than a year, I'm telling you that we're gonna make, we're gonna make good on what we plan to do with that property, which is gonna enhance the Gathering Place, it's gonna enhance Milton as a whole, and if we, if we design it as, as we're planning out, it's gonna be a destination for anybody that comes to visit this city. They're gonna wanna go, they're gonna wanna go to the museum, they're gonna wanna go to the West Side to see what's going on, and oh, by the way, you wanna, you've gotta get down to the Gathering Place to see what we're gonna do. Okay, all this ties together with, with regards to what our, our appeal is for this, this enhanced liquor license, that all fits into what our future designs are gonna be. And, and like I said, we've lost thousands of dollars just because we simply cannot accommodate what folks are asking for Bloody Marys, and hot toddies, and, and screwdrivers for, for wedding events, anniversary parties, and, you know, birthday parties, ninety-year birthday parties, oh, they don't wanna do it because we can't serve a Bloody Mary, you know? And I understand that, so this is a difficult, this is a difficult topic. I mean, we certainly are not gonna generate the revenue that a bowling alley, or another bar opening will certainly do. However, there are things that we can bring into, we can bring into Milton by the, our existence and what we wanna do to enhance what we're doing, enhance the city, and generate more revenue for everybody if we get those, if we get those weddings, if we get those parties, if we get those events happening at the Gathering Place.
This is in the general topic of goodwill, like we have a splash pad, which does not bring in money, it costs money, but it brings goodwill. And I would just like to promote the goodwill for the Gathering Place.
Is there any further comments?
I just wanna add that I know historically, one of the main reasons that the city came up with the food versus alcohol for the Bar and Grills that we have given license to in the last, I'm gonna say, ten years, was to help those people out with their sales. I don't know if you remember this, Maxine, David, but you probably remember one of the places. But I think that utilizing this license to help the Gathering Place to be able to have more events, so that they can be more self-sufficient, is something that we need to do.
The, the only comment I would make is, it's very difficult to put a, a dollar number, or a value number, on the improvements in the neighborhood, and what that does. And, you know, I'd have to credit the Gathering Place for what they have done just to keep that neighborhood going and to improve it. I, you know, that is, that's, that's a positive, that oftentimes, I mean, we, we kinda talked about it with the bowling alley, like, we don't want an empty building, we don't want buildings deteriorating, we wanna see improvements, but this is something that the Gathering Place does have a good record of demonstrating being a good neighbor, and continually improving the value of that neighborhood, too. Anything else, anybody else? Maxine? All right, time for a motion.
Thank you.
I will make the motion that we approve the Class B beer and Class B liquor license for the Gathering Place.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion, and there is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
How many is that, just so I know? Can we do a roll call vote? That would be helpful, I just can't hear very well.
Aye.
Sorry. I have my sheet. Um, and that's not it.
This is a trick question, what are her names?
I have a sheet, hang on. Okay, Alder Adams.
Aye.
Alder Adams, aye. Alder Clark.
Aye.
Alder Clark, aye. Alder Ladder.
Aye.
Alder Ladder, aye. Alder Stregel.
No.
Alder Stregel, no. Alder Zajak.
No.
Alder Zajak, no. Alder Roush.
Teresa.
No.
Alder Roush, no. We have a tie, Mayor. I'm about that we give the Gathering Place their liquor license. Class B beer and Class B liquor license.
And, and just so the council is aware, just talking with the attorney, we had one Class B grandfathered, and one Class B reserved. So based on the order in which the motions took place, Varsity Lanes got the grandfathered, and Gathering Place would get the reserved. So just so everybody's, is aware. It's, it's, it's an important distinction, based on the quota system, and how, how we would, how Alena will then implement those licenses, but based on the order in which those, those motions were taken, that's how it was laid out.
Does that mean that the Gathering Place has to pay a fee?
Correct.
Yeah, they'll have to pay the ten thousand dollars, and then, as soon as they can, there's a grant then, that they apply for, and they get that back from the city. The money has to actually technically change hands, according to the state. So, um, yes, that, I mean, that's the biggest thing between a grandfathered and a reserved. As a reserved, you're gonna have to put the ten thousand dollars down. And what, apply for a grant. What is the timeframe which they have to give the ten thousand dollars, or submit it to the city? Before we can grant the license, or before I can actually hand him the paper license? And then, is there some sort of expiration, like if they don't submit the, the fee within a certain amount of time, that that license is not available anymore, or how does that work?
I don't, no, I, I don't recall off the top of my head how the ordinance is worded. I doubt that there is a time limit on that, but they're, then they're just out to ten thousand dollars until they apply for the grant. I don't, I don't know if you recall, Alena, or...
Well, I guess my que, my question isn't that, it's like, it's how long does the Gathering Place have to submit that ten thousand dollars to the city?
Well, as Alena has indicated, you can't issue the license without it.
So like, so if they didn't in ninety days, or, I mean, I, I'm confused, like if we have a license kind of in limbo, then?
You know, I, I guess the biggest thing is, and perhaps the Gathering Place can help with this, is, um, do you have ten thousand dollars that you can pay and be out about a week?
The answer's yes.
Okay, so then it might be a non-issue.
Okay. Well, it's kind of a done deal now.
We can get that paperwork through very quickly, I'll help you with that.
So then...
Can I, can I ask a question?
And I would, I was, I would note, Mayor, in that scenario where you, where it's been issued, but there's no amount paid, that's still outstanding, and so if somebody else then wants to file another application, and they, then, then, and they can put the ten thousand dollars, and then they may have lost their license.
Okay, that's, that was my question. Is that clear to you?
What was that, exactly?
A condition for a reserve Class B license, as the clerk's indicated, is paying the ten thousand dollars, which you indicated you could, and the mayor had asked, well, what if you don't? And I said, well, if you don't, then the license isn't issued, and somebody else can apply for it, and if they are granted and get their ten thousand in first, then they get the license. And I understand, it's not gonna be a concern, but that was just the answer to the question.
I understand, can I ask a question?
Sure, please do.
And this is not to be offensive to anyone in this room, okay? So my understanding is, the determination of the, the reserve and the liquor license was just strictly because we were second on the list in this decision-making process, it had nothing, I mean, it's just a flip of the coin that we, we ended up in this particular sequence with regards to the, to this?
I, I can speak to that. I put the agenda together, so yeah, I put it in order, and the way I did it is in order that I received the applications.
Okay. That, and then fairness, well, then it leads me to the next question, and don't take offense to this, but if these folks in ninety days are not successful, is there any way that we would be able to up our licensure, so that we were not the ones that have to give out the ten thousand dollars every year to get our, to maintain our license? And I, and don't take offense to that, please, I just, it's just a, a question.
You don't need to do it every year.
Pardon?
You can just do it once.
Oh, it's a one-time shot, it's not an annual thing? Okay, all right, okay, that's simple, thanks.
So if he doesn't act on, and give the ten thousand dollars prior to the ninety days, that, that license is still available?
No, even, it's even before ninety days, right? So if, if at the next meeting, we could have somebody else applying for a license, the next Personnel and Finance, and if that ten thousand dollars wasn't in...
So if he has the option, though, of walking away from the, the license that we just gave him, and then in ninety days sees what the bowling alley is doing, and then applies at that point, assuming nobody else had, he would get the ninth one, rather than...
Yeah, he could just not pay the ten thousand, and wait out the, you know, hoping that Varsity doesn't get a business, and they relinquish their license, I guess. Kind of a weird situation, but, I mean, we don't write the statutes. All right, so, that is quite exciting. So now, number seven is discussion of possible action. I don't know if this is a mute point, but, um, the Class B beer and Class B liquor license application from Daniel Thompson doing business as gophers at the Caddyshack located to twenty-nine North Janesville Street. So, Mark, do you have a recommendation on now that we don't have a liquor license available?
Well, it's, it's on your agenda, and so, since there's no license available, I presume that the motion would be denied based on the fact there's no longer a license available.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion to deny this application, is there a second? There's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item number eight, discussion of possible action on the Class B beer and Class B liquor license application. Sure, oh, no, come up, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware that you wanted to speak on it. But, I mean, you can go ahead and speak on it.
Thank you. Tina Thompson, 5424 North Waverly Drive. I guess I'm not understanding why we all weren't given the opportunity to speak before the votes were cast. I don't feel that that's quite fair, to be perfectly honest. We spoke, Linda had spoke earlier about a building sitting empty in town, that's what's going to happen to us without a liquor license. The building, the business is going to be worth nothing, and I understand there's a legal issue between us. My thought was to hopefully the city would perhaps hold a license for whoever wins this legal dispute. Now, we'll have a business worth nothing. It'll sit empty without a liquor license. So I don't understa... I mean...
Was there any question in any of the council members' mind? Did you understand when you voted to issue the license to the Gathering Place that that would eliminate the availability? I just, I think they were clear on that. The only comment I would make is I'm sorry that I thought that I communicated clear that if you wanted to speak on something, you could speak on it at the beginning, or if you wanted to speak on it.
Well, I just assumed everyone would get a chance before votes were cast for two licenses and three businesses wanted it. I mean, I guess I don't understand, I guess I didn't understand the process, and I apologize for that.
I'm sorry too, because I didn't...
But I just feel that it's extremely unfair, I mean, I understand our situation, and I completely agreed before when you had said, don't issue it to anyone, and that was my idea, because it's not your job to beat the judge on this case, I think that's completely fine, but now we're going to be in the same situation as the bowling alley. It is a bar. We won't be able to open, we won't be able to, and we would plan on opening it ourselves. We are looking for, you know, someone to purchase it or whatever, but if that didn't happen, we're willing to step in and open it right away. So now you've given out two licenses to someone that is searching for someone to run the business, and for someone that just, you know, has an add-on to the beer and wine they currently have. So they're talking about losing six or $7,000 a year in revenue, we're looking at a couple hundred thousand. So I guess if it's at all possible to reconsider, I don't know, but...
Would you be, do you anticipate that your legal dilemmas will be finished in 90 days, and you can come back?
I would certainly hope so, yes.
So I would use that because, you know, this was not cast in concrete that anyone gets it. It's got a 90-day wait.
Right, and that's true.
So I would hope that in 90 days, you would be in a position to, you know, speak to that.
But if they find a tenant in 90 days, this building will rot without a license. I mean, we're not, we're not talking about an add-on sale or add-on sales to our current income, we're talking about the business as a whole. The building will sit empty without a liquor license, I mean, it's...
But you can still serve wine or beer.
Well, we tried that, and almost went out of business the first six months, it did not work. That's the reason we tried so hard to get our license four and a half, five years ago. I mean, we carried that license for five years. It is just unfortunate that our tenants didn't renew in May, we assumed they did. I had no idea. They broke their lease and left, I had no idea they didn't apply for their license. It was an accident I was unaware of, they let it lapse, we had no, we had no idea it even happened. So had they have reapplied, as they should have, it would be ours. I didn't know that they did not, they didn't tell me, then they broke their lease, and they're in default of their lease. I mean, we had it for five years without incident.
I have a quick question for Mark, if there are back taxes, can we issue liquor licenses?
No.
And my understanding is there's back taxes?
Well, I had called about that, and they'll be, they can be paid tomorrow, if that's the case.
So, but we wouldn't be able to issue that license tonight based on the back taxes, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, we didn't ask for it to be issued tonight because of the legal issue that we're going through. We're in a legal issue right now. My solution was if you guys could hold that license until that was settled, and it should be settled, I mean, I'm hoping within the next couple of months.
Is there a reason why the back taxes haven't been paid for all these years?
We're on a payment plan, we've been, I've been paying them, I just have, I just have one payment left. And I can pay them tomorrow, I mean, it's not, that's not, it can be paid, that's not a problem. I'm sorry, what?
I was just wondering, because I didn't know the situation.
We're just on a payment plan, is all. Like I said, I don't necessarily ask that it be issued to either one of us tonight because of these legal issues. I was just hoping the city would hold it for us, because now the building will sit empty without a liquor license. I mean, it's a bar. And it's open seven days a week.
I guess I got the impression when you had said during the other meeting that you were going to, you were okay with waiting, that everything was good, and now we have a 90-day, a 90-day situation.
No, I understand that, I would have been okay with waiting, the way it looked before, it didn't seem like you guys were going to issue any, so of course, that's not a problem, there's going to be some available. Now there's none available. Yes, in 90 days, there may be, or there may not be. I mean, if he rents that out in 90 days, we have nothing.
And just so, so everybody is clear on this, we issued a liquor license, and if in 90 days they didn't have a business in there, we would have to go through a revocation process. It's, you know, they have said, yes, we would relinquish it, but, I mean, I just want to be clear on that, that we can't enforce that if they say, you know, 90 days goes by, but in two weeks, they're going to have a contract, I mean... So we all understand that. The second point I would make is if somebody that voted for the previous motion, why... Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, I mean, could make a motion to reconsider at this point?
Yes.
It's up to you guys.
So what, I think what the mayor is alluding to is if the council chooses, or if a member of, if a member of the council who voted to confirm one of the previous liquor licenses would like to reconsider that vote, it would have to be a member who voted in the majority in order to call for a reconsideration of one of those previous actions that you've taken. If that's what the council so chooses, or a member of the majority side so chooses.
Is there anybody that would like to make a motion to reconsider? Okay, hearing none. Then can I get a, I guess we're, I guess we're done with this item then on the agenda, is that correct, Mark? We would go to the next item, or...
That's correct, there's no further...
We already voted.
Yeah, you already voted, so it just, you need to reopen in order to take any further action on it, but you've allowed some discussion post-motion for good reason, but beyond that, right, there's no further action you can take.
Okay.
Okay.
Agenda item number eight. Discussion and possible action on the Class B beer and Class B liquor license application from Douglas J. Kraus doing business located 229 North Janesville Street. There's a motion, is there a second? Is there any discussion? Does anybody have any comments or discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on a memorandum of understanding between the City and School District of Milton regarding crossing guards.
Thank you, the item that's before you this evening is a memorandum of understanding, or commonly referred to as an MOU, between the City of Milton and the School District of Milton, which formalizes the agreement between those two entities for the crossing guards that are located within school zones. There previously has been two agreements that the City and the School District have negotiated together. This agreement, in essence, kind of combines those two agreements, and provides further clarification and further kind of information as to how that program shall be run and established. In essence, it makes the crossing guards city employees, it talks about training and how those employees are appointed. So this, this is an agreement that is, was kind of requested by the School District to kind of clean up the last two agreements, and then move into perpetuity with this agreement being establishing the protocol for the crossing guards program.
Could you clarify how the city will be doing the hiring and personnel management when the crossing guards are transferred from the school to the city?
They already are city employees, and they have been since 2014.
You know, because I was confused, this has gone back and forth enough that I'm looking for the latest and greatest update on why.
Right, since 2014, they have been city employees, so they've been city employees now for two school years, and they will continue to be so.
And this has worked out for the best?
Yes, that's, we haven't had any concerns, I guess, for that matter. The School District has agreed to pay for 50% of the costs associated with this program, so that's not only 50% of the wages, but also 50% of the additional burden that is on our benefits packages, so...
So this has proven to be a better working model, thank you, I just...
Yep.
And then also, does that still include the School District paying for part of the supplies that the crossing guards use? Okay, and then you said that they're paying 50% of the benefits in that? Are we, are they paying 50% of our payroll for that?
They reimburse, or I'm sorry, we invoice them on a biannual basis for all the costs associated with the program.
Correct.
Okay.
Basically, the benefit is FICA. Because there's no, and they get, I think, eight hours of PTO, so...
Yeah, but what about your time?
It takes me about five minutes to generate 343, so the answer to that would be no.
You know, that's, that was my question.
Teresa, do you have a comment or a question? Oh, okay.
But if you're still discussing it.
Go ahead, Teresa.
I request the City Council approve the memorandum of understanding for the crossing guards program between the City and the School District of Milton.
Is there a second, second? There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Agenda item number 10, discussion of possible action regarding resolution providing for the sale of approximately $2,820,000 waterworks system revenue bonds? Did I say that correctly?
Yep, you got it.
Some of us can't spend a month in Florida, you know what I'm saying?
This is just the resolution that wasn't available a couple of weeks ago, formalizing the motion that was made. Going to sale on these bonds in a couple of weeks on August 4th, so this is just the formal resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2015-12.
There's a motion, is a second, is there any further questions or discussion on this? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 11, discussion of possible action regarding the CMAR Compliance Maintenance Annual Report and Resolution 2015-15. There is a memo and documents for item number 11.
This is the annual report that the DNR requires for the treatment plant, and they want to make sure that the City Council receives a report each year. This is for 2014, for last year. The only thing that the treatment plant lost any points on, on their point schedule, was that we allowed people to run water, clear water during 2014 so their pipes wouldn't freeze, and so that continuous water gives you extra flow. So it actually was clear water going to the plant, but it's a little overdesigned, so it wasn't really a problem for treatment, but you just lose some points on that. We have an A rating for the DNR system, they have no recommendations for us at this time, so...
That's great.
And so if, but they do require that the council get the report and pass a resolution each year.
And will we approve the CMAR reports and resolutions for the middle to the Department of National Research?
There's a motion, and... Elder person? Oh, Teresa made it too. Okay, there we go. There's a motion and a second, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, the motion carries. Item number 12, general items. Item number 13, next meeting date, August 4th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Item number 14, mayor and elder person reports, are there any staff reports from any elder persons or any updates?
If I could, I want to thank Al and Howie for going out to the ethanol plant and just being neighborly and sharing their, you know, going out and actually talking with them, because we did get off on the wrong foot with the ethanol plant, and it's nice that we are beginning to get much better terms. I heard this back from one of the ethanol secretaries, that she was just delighted to see that, you know, everyone was on speaking terms.
Great, thank you, any further, any further elder person reports?
Yes, I have one. I would just like to remind everyone that we do have the Ice Age Trail improvements completed. The Rock County group came through, and they've done an exceptional job. I would recommend that to families and groups to get on the Ice Age Trail. It's one of our trails that we have in the city that are very interesting and fun to do. And we do now have a trail map that Inga has, so if you would like that, you can get that from her. And then I also would like to say that in my travels to see my sons, I have, I saw a lot of very cool things that I would like to bring back to the City of Milton. This is a wonderful place, and I was very happy to be back to my own house. But I also would like to say to the FFA, and to all of the people that are responsible for the 4th of July events, that both my son and I agreed in Hawaii that the Milton 4th of July celebration tops everybody. And there's a lot of people that should be thanked for that, it truly is one of our wonderful city events, and I'm looking forward to the chicken barbecue that's coming up, and the events that we have coming in the library, we have a lot of stuff with that. Lisa will, I'm sure, talk about that. And so I would just like for this, the council to be open to some of the ideas that I'll present at other meetings, so that we can look at new things and fun things to do here. And then also, I would like to have on our next agenda our team-building exercises.
We would love to have it on the next agenda, thank you, Linda. Teresa, Teresa, Teresa. Is there any other elder person reports? I just want to say how nice it is to have Dave here, and to have everybody here, and have our, we have our fire chief here, we have our chief of police here, and we have our director of the library here. We have, it's like our whole family is home, and we have Teresa on the phone, so I guess it doesn't get much better than this, right? Okay. Staff reports. We'll start with DPW.
There's actually nothing out of the ordinary going on right now, so we're just catching up on projects, that's...
Come on, we got a new paved park view, don't you want to talk about that?
Well, the park view is done three months ahead of schedule, actually, even though it was a couple of days where it caused a little chaos with the not, you know, not parking in front of the business, but the actual completion date was October 31st, so...
Wow.
So it is quite a ways ahead of schedule.
That is like on budget, on time, knock it out of the ballpark.
Hopefully under budget. And the railroad crossing actually isn't scheduled until September.
until September for that repair.
Dave?
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
I mean, Howie, I know you're instrumental in getting that project completed. I'm a traveler from out of town, I travel out around every single day. And I just want to say that the guys that were doing that were doing a professional job. The disruption was limited, particularly at the times of high traffic between eight, eight, you know, early morning, eight and a four o'clock travel. They did a spectacular job as routing that, routing that, that traffic, and I'm speaking, that I did that twice a day for several weeks, and they did a great job, and you guys need to be commended for that, because it was, for us travelers, it was awesome.
Great. Mayor, can I just make an additional comment to that? I did get a very nice compliment while you were on vacation, Howie, on Donnie and his professionalism in working with the Rock County Ice Age Trail folks.
That's good. I'll give my attaboy when I see him tomorrow, so... But, and they also, they have to finish the topsoil yet. That's, that's about the last thing on the project, so...
Perfect. Dan?
Everyone got the, the new water bill format? I talked with Carrie to see what the reaction has just been over the last couple of days. I think for the most part, they were, it was very positive. I know there were a few hiccups that we hoped to crack the next go-around, but in terms of the first go-around, I think it went very smooth.
And the city still has money?
Yep.
Alright.
You saw the report, and you're putting on the finance report, and there's still cash in the bank.
You know, fire chief?
Well, first, I think it's appropriate that welcoming the chief of police, that we remind him that we did win the Fourth of July baseball game, or softball game, excuse me. And so, two years in a row, I'm not going to say any more than that.
It's on.
Yeah, good, good.
I was not in attendance. I don't think it would have mattered, so, appreciate that.
And again, I won't talk about the score or anything, so...
They can blame it on to the judge, or the referee.
The study is in its final stages. We're meeting on, or, excuse me, Thursday with RRW management to get the draft version of the report, so that we can review that with the project team. As soon as he gets that back to me, I will make sure I send it out to everybody. In the draft report, there's going to be the recommendations plus a tentative implementation plan, so we'll, we'll get all that out as soon as we get that. It's been an interesting time with this study, and we found out a lot of good information with it. And I think that it spurred on some other departments in the area to look at some of the things that he talked to them about, so it was, it was valuable for more than just us. And we started the process for filling our open slots with all the people that have left in the last few months. We had nearly half our officers leave for other jobs, and it really has taken its toll on us with, with the amount of work that the officers have to do, but it's, we should have that wrapped up by the end of this month.
Great, thank you. Our new police chief?
Well, I'm delighted to be here. So it's nice to get started this week, and two days in, and already have had a little excitement and some things to, to address, so appreciate the hospitality of everybody in my department. They've been fantastic welcoming me aboard, and I have a lot to learn and a lot to listen to. So thank you all for your participation in the process of getting me here. And I'll probably have something more substantial at the next meeting, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Our library?
The library received about $125,000 for fundraising in the last two weeks. $85,000 was from a foundation. The rest was from some farm families and farm businesses. We're at 1.46 million right now in total raised. We had engineers do an assessment of the building, and we were, our cost estimate is 2.7, that didn't really change. The conceptual plan included the tower on the corner of the building, and they determined it was too costly to move the staircase to have that happen. So we're going to now do, to still have our high street presence, we'll have a bump out of the building of about eight feet that will be two stories high. And we have a new conceptual drawing of that that we'll have on our website shortly. But the savings of eliminating the tower was quickly eaten up by some infrastructure costs that they found that needs to happen too. So we'll keep you updated.
Okay, thank you. Our city administrator?
Thank you. I will echo some of the previous comments in that I'd like to very much welcome back Elder Person Adams to our meetings. It's great to have you back. I know, as Teresa probably can attest to, how difficult it is to be on the phone, and not see all of our smiling faces every day. So happy to have you back, and thank you. And also, like to welcome the chief as well. I know we talked on Monday morning right, right first thing. I got a little concerned when one of the things that we talked about with the chief was his emergency preparedness planning, and then there was a tornado on Saturday. And on Monday morning, the power went out in the building here, so... I don't know, only one thing has changed during that time, but...
Comes in threes.
You know, he hit the ground running, so, so welcome, and, you know, I know some of us have had an opportunity to, to meet and talk with Scott a little bit more than others, but I think everybody will be, you know, happy to get to know Scott, and we're happy to have you aboard, so, welcome.
Okay. Teresa, can you read the item number 23? Our motion to go into closed session? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously, and we will...